I've got a thumbs up here, so we're streaming our special call session and this is a session that's devoted to the Unified Development Code. We're going to get Mr. Haviland and Ms. Korman Camp. Well, I'm gonna hang with Corbin, it's easier, to go over the Unified Development Code that they have been working on for almost two years now, and help us understand the changes. I think we have a summary of changes, and they're gonna kind of give it to us in a distilled format, so, Mr. Haviland, are you gonna lead this off?
Yes.
Okay.
Real quick, I just want to tell y'all what's in front of you. Y'all are gonna have a copy of the zoning map, which is the larger map. You've got two charts, one is for the use chart, one is the development standards chart. We've got just newest draft of the optional district, which are the two mostly written text, and then you've got one sheet that is our quick guide, that focused on each section. And then we have a chart that has the comments we received online and staff responses to those comments, so.
Okay. Mr. Haviland, it's all yours.
Okay, this is, we're calling draft four. And just to go over a real quick, kind of, you know, this process really started back in 2015 with the adoption, the start of the adoption of the Conkers Plan, and as, you know, continued today. The most recent event we had was the November 20th work session with planning committee here in Virginia to address some of the comments that came out of the planning zone public hearing. Just some quick pictures from some of the public hearings of that. Now, to get into the actual UDC itself, before we can adopt the UDC, there's several other chapters that are to change, modify, delete, or move into the UDC. This is just a quick outline of what those chapters in our current works are gonna have to be changed or modified. And for the first public hearing, we'll have an outline of what we did, so what the applicant said, what's being changed, modified, deleted. Now, the UDC is divided into eight sections. You can see here, our top introductions, that vision to now move to the back to make it a little simpler to read, and just to dive right in each section. The directory section is really just kind of establishing the legal terminologies, similar language in our previous code. Section two is the administrative and governing bodies. Section two's, these bodies were currently scattered throughout the code for them. There were no major changes to the roles of previous established boards and commissions, other than kind of lining up some of the smittle dates and other requirements to be uniform as possible within bodies. For example, the smittle date for a variance and smittle date for a rezoning are now the same, rather than having two totally different processes. The stormwater review board was removed, you know, they've been removed for a while, they're still in our current ordinance. The addition of the architecture review thing, and then the tree advisory board was renamed to probably a more appropriate landscape advisory board. Section three is the processes and procedures for these boards and for the items that they will be reviewing. The new processes and procedures are added to this section. This is the review and approval and use designation for optional district law code, much more detailed in that later. The special exception and use exception process. The special exception and use exception process are gonna replace our current conditional use process. And the reason we went with two processes rather than one, our current conditional use process applies to a wide variety of things. For example, if you built a duplex, if that duplex became vacant for six months, you would have to require reapproval of your building. So, we separated the conditional use into two different things, special exception and use exception. Special exceptions, if you're building something and you get special permission to build it, it's allowed to stay because you got permission. If it's a use exception, it's, somebody occupied a building, it's already ready to move in, doesn't need facial modifications or a new structure, they can occupy that space once they leave that use spot. Administrative adjustments, this is also a new category. What an administrative adjustment is, is kind of like a variance line, but it's a tiny, little adjustment, say a setback with like a foot, and the applicant is requesting administrative adjustment, staff can approve it if we agree with their plan to avoid it having to go through a variance process. If it's something major, then obviously it's still a variance. And then the architecture review process, which is a safe for previous drafts that we've already spoken about. Section four, this establishes zoning districts as well as measurements, sections, definable applicant facilities. And what this is, the first section is just kind of a legal section set up in different zones, and then the last part is the measurement. So, it's a really graphic section sort of showing how you measure buildings, like how you measure the, this is not the straight, the transparency, what a front yard is, what a front setback is. It's more graphic and it's explanation of what goes on. Five is the format system, which currently we have in our code, but we've kind of changed the graphics and sort of reduced it down and cut the requirements and they go a little simpler following, while also lining it up for our other zoning districts as far as how you look at it as a terminology and sort of the flow of the document, you know, as far as where setbacks are, where lots size are, just to make it blend with the rest of the documents, so it looks like a cohesive document. But there's one new part they're adding to this, which you can see the example of the map at the bottom right, and this is the additional setback requirement for the public front. And this is from, just in the T district areas, we've realized that some of the lots, because of the variance right away throughout the city, especially in that area, that some of the lots that they build to the zero, you know, zero feet on the lot, it's convincing the public ground to avoid where it's a small sidewalk. So, depending on where it is on that van, is how far do you have, how much space you have to be from the face of curb to the face of building. So, it'll increase your setback requirement, most likely. In certain areas, you know, a university drive, I believe, is a 12-foot zone, we're doing use on the side streets, produces like many feet. And it shouldn't be much of a problem in those places, it's kind of attached to outlawed lots. Six is the residential use districts, and this is just all the requirements for residential use and development types that are allowed within the residential use district, which consists of the conventional development options, which include single and multi-unit residential dwellings, introduces the compact development and the conservation development. A compact development, you have the same, say a 10 acre parcel, you have the same density, but you can decrease the lot size by increasing the common space. Whereas a conservation development is somewhere we add something, fire, let's say, a flitzen, can't rebuild it anyway. In that case, you can increase the density and decrease the lot size, but you're preserving that flitzen. You're putting in some kind of conservation ship or something that will perpetuate your tone. And then the other thing, which y'all are more familiar with in previous cases, is the compact sports style development. And then, in addition to stuff, we've also added in what we're calling the infill development standards, which is sort of a new big concept. So, if you're an empty lot in an existing neighborhood, and when somebody goes to build out of that lot, their setbacks in the front, the size, building height, and where their garage is located, located is all determined by the adjacent properties. It's just so that you can contextually blend in with what's going on in that neighborhood, and we didn't have to create 100 different zoning districts for each neighborhood, because even though they seem similar, when it comes down to the measurements, they're actually fairly different.
On your infill development standards for residential uses, is that, and you're saying basically aesthetically, it's just gonna look like every other thing if there's an empty lot in a?
Yeah, it's just a match up. So, you don't have that broken dude effect, you know, like, for example, on Gale Street, you know, currently, if you're R2 or R3, your setback's 25 feet, but a lot of those houses are 35 feet. Yeah, so you don't want a house chugging up on the road, pushing on the back, or the opposite thing, where if the house is closer to the street, then it's setback's 25 feet, then it's pushing on the back.
Another good example is on Gillespie Street.
I was thinking that house.
So, it actually went through a variance process, and those infill development standards could have avoided having to go through that variance process because it would line up with the setbacks that are on that street, parking is in the rear, it matches the block face. And so, planning staff will have to do a little bit more review initially, it won't necessarily be the applicant's responsibility, but it'll avoid, hopefully, a lot of those procedural things that, there's just no way to blanket, put a zoning classification for every area, because there's so many development patterns on each block.
You're talking about the elongated house on Gillespie?
Yeah, that has the rear loaded, so it went through a variance for front setback, even though it met the, if you looked at the front porch steps on the vacant lot to the left of it, it would have matched that with an infill.
Less hoops to jump through for me.
Yeah, exactly. So, hopefully, we'll avoid that, but.
And less time.
Yeah.
And then, while we're speaking about this, when it comes to zoning classifications for residential areas, we've gone away with the standard classifications of R1, 2, 3, 3A, 4, 4A, 5, and R6. And what we've gone to is an SD2, which is suburban detached, two dwelling units per acre, up to two dwelling units per acre, and SD6, which is suburban detached, up to six dwelling units per acre. And then also added the rural neighborhood classification, which is one dwelling unit per acre. And after looking at a density map of several houses actually built out, we found that most existing neighborhoods kind of fall into these categories, fairly easy like one of these. But then with the infill standards, where it was reinforced, that, you know, it's gonna line up with what's there. So, if there's an empty lot in an established neighborhood, when it builds out, it's going to match no matter what we set the setbacks on.
So, when you look at the zoning map, you may see SD2, SD6, or something along those lines, but if it's a platted subdivision, as long as you have a plat that is in the city, that's gonna be, you know, if a house burns down, the infill standards would apply. So, in green light, if the house burns down, the infill would just meet the setback to either side, the property on either side. So, hopefully, simplify.
And then we also, in addition to that, we have two traditional neighborhood types. So, a traditional neighborhood new and a traditional neighborhood existing. Traditional neighborhood new is kind of a developed pattern, similar to what Adelaide is, house is closer to the front, parking on the side of the house, smaller blocks. And then traditional neighborhood existing kind of encompasses the entire central core, start of the city, the first. And then there are standards specifically for each one of those that will apply. And there is very limited commercial in each one of those that's allowed, which we'll get to in the commercial these sections. And then for multifamily, there's a multifamily dwelling unit nine, a multifamily dwelling unit 20. Nine is a density of nine units per acre, dwelling is 20 units per acre. But the 20 units per acre is also maxed out at 57 per meter. So, you can't have 25 other apartments that, you know, you have to manage the 60 units per acre at the same time. Then the commercial use district, this is probably something that we're familiar with, but we've kind of done away again with the C1, 2, and we still have C3 on the books, which is downtown. And we've gone to just a C for commercial, which is mainly your highway commercial, highway 12 type commercial. And then CN, which is commercial neighborhood, which is generally could be in the areas that the previous C1 designation was. And then a new classification, a commercial rule. And this will be like all the way toward the end of Louisville Street or the west end of 182 before you get to 25. Areas that have more of a rural characteristic to them, their development styles and patterns and requirements should be a little bit different and less than what it is on highway 12. And so, this is an attempt to try and codify that. And then, traditional neighborhood new and existing both have very limited commercial that has specific standards for that stuff to blend in within a residential area. And again, with those, as you can see at the bottom right, it also has infill standards that apply, so that there is some kind of commercial use in residential areas to kind of make it match up and blend with that residential area. Section eight is the industrial use districts. This is real similar to what we currently have, is just kind of, one of the main things we did throughout the industrial stuff is just to be more specific, that's already loud, we're just saying it rather than implying.
What was the area that says parcels just north of 182, removed from section eight industrial districts?
Is that?
That was the stuff for the previous, previous industrial park site. They resozed a large swath of land.
That is that Ramsey property.
Right. And then that went away, but there's.
Fast break.
I think it's residential stuff.
And then here's a whole new concept, special districts, which was spoken of in the conference plan. So, in special districts, you have several types, you have medical, institutional, educational, and stuff like parks and civic centers, stuff like 50 areas kind of fall into those. And kids on their own sort of standards and classifications, setbacks, they kind of heard that, you know, for example, when Tarpley High School had to expand their cafeteria, under our current conditional use rule, they had to go through a whole conditional use process, just to add that sort of, this would help alleviate some of that. So, also have a little standard that they can go by as they move forward. And the special education encompasses everything from K through 12 and higher learning, public and private, it's kind of just public. And the institutional in this case is anything that's used Tarpley owns or manages. And again, there are built infill development standards for this, it's located within a neighborhood. Optional districts, this is one we talked a lot about. This is the latest version of the optional districts. The optional districts previously were recommended to be bigger than seven, four bigger than seven. We have come back from that, and optional district now is just a zone, optional district. And as a zone, you're, there are five use categories, one that exists at the day of the passage of this, four that you can opt into, but one that exists is optional existing, which is similar for a rural neighborhood. Limited commercial, but you're allowed to build a single family house, you're allowed to survive as a rural neighborhood. But once you go through a process of the use designation, you can apply one of the four other uses, which is commercial, traditional neighborhood development, conservation district, and industrial. And the process of applying that use designation is make an application to the city, submit a conceptual master plan. A conceptual master plan is not a real heavy document. What it's going to do is show conceptually how you're breaking up the land uses within your parcel, or if your parcel's one land use, how the circulation patterns are gonna go through that parcel. How are you gonna touch the adjacent properties? How are you touching the right of land? So that the city can anticipate the future development and work for direct, or getting those needs out there. Once you have an approved use designation, then everything on the development standards and use standards from that designation will then apply to the areas shown on that conceptual master plan. And then, so in the future, if you need to modify this conceptual master plan, you can go through the same process. And, you know, the idea is a conceptual master plan, not only helps the city determine needs, but also helps your neighbors when they have a developer approach to them, or if they wanna develop, for how that should develop out, like where they should make their connections to your property line for future riding lanes. It kind of prevents situations like we have on Highway 12 across from Walmart, Neighborhood Market, Hotel built, and they sold a little flag to east that runs all the way to the right of way, and he got access to that intersection, to that cross. So, now the properties next to it don't have access to that. This kind of process will prevent that happening in the future. We could do like we did in Walmart Neighborhood Market, and the entrance drive on the side is actually called a right, which opens up all the land behind it for development. So, it's just a way to kind of guide this development side responsibility.
But it's not, excuse me, sorry, no, I was gonna say, but, but let's be clear, it's not a rezoning process.
It's not a rezoning process, not even a public hearing, but there is a notification department. The property line, the property owners that are adjacent to the property that's requesting the use designation will be notified to all meetings or phone up to take the present and discuss if you're what's being discussed.
All right. I just, I want to make sure that I heard correctly. The previous draft, you were able to, you were gonna have to pick one of the four categories. Now, everything optional district is the zone.
Pick one of the four.
And then you're going to pick a use. So, right now, if I'm looking at the current map, everything that's on, I'm gonna just say the bypass. Everything that's on the bypass is optional districts. All of that's the same as the previous map.
Well, the previous map, they were all, sort of, optional existing at first, to then be rezoned. The first draft had a rezoning as like hood, where you had to do a fully engineered document, a fully engineered site plan to get the approval of rezoning to that use designation.
So, now, so I'm, so now, I own a piece of property at the interchange. It is currently zone, or is currently the use as optional district. I decide that I think that I have a commercial development that I'm interested in having there. I'm going to work with a professional, not to do a set of engineered plat type of drawing. I'm going to develop a conceptual plan, generally where we want the roads, generally where we think buildings are going to be. I'm gonna come meet with city staff. I'm gonna say, we're looking to do the optional commercial development use designation. At that point, what is the, what is the process?
The next step within DRC, and what DRC is gonna be reviewing it based on like criteria, like making sure there's no traffic issues, making sure utilities are there, there's no service issues for emergency personnel. Just kind of looking at that, they're not diving in, they'll have any landscape plans, their bumpers, any of that at that point. Then once they make their recommendations to modify the plan, it goes to plan and it's a, where they have, you know, they can either approve it, deny it, or approve it with a condition. And then it goes to the board alternate, and then they make the ultimate binding decision.
Where does the notification to adjacent property owners?
The adjacent property owners that would touch it, or be directly across from it, would all get notification in the mail 15, in this draft, 15 days prior to the first public hearing, so that they can show, or the first public meeting.
Would that be the DRC meeting?
It would be planning.
Planning is, planning is, I mean, it doesn't work on.
All right. I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear. So, we're able to have, and it may spell it out, I just haven't seen this part of the draft yet.
Very good.
So, I have a client come to me, I put on a different hat. Had a client come to me, and I was going to be producing a drawing for them. I'm going to rough out, do a conceptual plan, very conceptual, blobby type, very preliminary. I bring that, that's what goes through DRC, and that's what's going to planning and zoning? Or is there going to be, is there an intermediary step somewhere in there where there has to be some tightening up of the, what gets approved or denied?
With, with the purpose of the conceptual master plan, you know, for the property owner, if they have some money approach, and they wanna sell this piece in the front for commercial, it's just to make, make everybody know how the rest of the property will develop out. So, when they get ready to sell it, if they, you know, they're going for a preliminary plat, they can do it all at the same time, or they can just get the use designation and then sell the property. But when that person comes and split off that main park, which is our standard policy now, a procedure now, they go through this preliminary plat, final plat procedure to cut that off. But it allows us to know that when they're going to do that plating process, is this driveway on the side needs to be a right of way or a dropway, because we understand what the actual connectivity.
Got it. All right. I think I understand that now. So, the other sort of tie into that question is, probably, hopefully, if somebody's gonna look at that, they're probably gonna have a conversation with somebody, the city staff, say, I've got this piece of property, I think I'm doing commercial development. At that point, I'm going to look to make sure that I'm generally following what the code says. So, I'm going to go under, what, what standards am I looking at to develop my conception?
On the use chart and development standards chart, you'll see to the far right, the optional district, you'll see use designation.
So, then I'm, so I'm gonna follow that and go back to whatever the standard will be. So, I think, and that may, again, that may be the part that's here, but if I'm, if I'm somebody, you know, I would say, generally speaking, people that are doing development and are working with consultants, somebody's going to pick up the phone or send you an email and say, hey, I wanna make sure I'm jumping off on the right spot. If that's not the case, is it pretty clearly spelled out in the new version, and I'm gonna go to this part in the use chart and the standard chart, and it's gonna be clear that that's the rules that I'm playing under?
I believe so, and we verify that, to make sure.
I think that's gonna be, I think that part's really important.
Make sure there's some actual records, but I'll verify that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, man?
I guess I'm just saying, I've got, I filled most of my questions from the optional districts and some of the landowners out there, and questions regarding, I guess you're looking for conceptually master, large scale type in neighborhoods of 30 and more acres. I mean, you're not gonna allow any type of highly condensed pack. Could you build a traditional Greenbrier Timber Cove or something like that within an optional district?
Yes, we've, we've got it worked at 10, section 10.
10-3?
Yeah, I'll tell you, I've had it.
Three is the process portion, 10 is the regulatory portion. Section 3 is the.
You're talking about parts that are not better in optional, but, or?
If it's, if it's an existing piece of property that's platted at the day the UDC passes, and you wanna do, you know, a rural neighborhood, you can just go to the plating process, you don't have to change the designation, that's allowed by our plan. If it's an existing piece of property and you wanna do some kind of commercial thing on it without changing the boundaries, then we have to spell it out like what, developing guidelines and use guidelines you follow, which is for a rural. If there's something in there, if you wanted to do a T and E, which you weren't the right size, you would have the ability to rezon to SD2 or SD6.
Or SD1.
We're trying to give them as much flexibility, because we understand, like, a lot of the people that are landowners out there are not ultimate builders, they just need the ability to be able to get to the point, get to the table, to sign the deal for the developer to take it. And so, the whole point of our exercise is to reduce that burden on the front end for the seller, to push it back toward the development back.
3311 is one aspect of that. That's for subdivision of land, like a residential subdivision of land, that's not trying to go through any of the optional use designations, and then try to find section 10.
It is a rural neighborhood development criteria and subdivision regulations, they're actually. actually, there's new road types that were introduced, and one of them's actually an open ditch road type, the width's been reduced, and then the curb type's been reduced, you want to provide a curb, and then a two foot wide curb and gutter. So there's some additional cost savings, you know, built into that.
Another section is ten, three, two, if you want to look at that, for other types of platted subdivisions.
But that's the work section, that was one of the things, and I had the first year in the D and C, the biggest thing was just the amount of other costs of the day for consultants to get you a point where you can actually take an option. So then we made another stat in the draft, and we discussed in the work section, and one of the biggest issues in that was rezoning aspect, it scared away potential buyers because of the rezoning process. And so, this is, you know, trying to take all that into consideration, still keep pushing it apart, so the ultimate developer is not the one, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Overlay districts, currently we only have one overlay district, which is the district, local district. In the future, we're going to add some other overlay districts, for varying reasons, either district districts, or some kind of developed district. But past for the, that's sub of all.
The difference between an overlay and a special district?
Special district.
We've talked about doing like a medical overlay at one point in time.
Yes, special district is zoning designation. The overlay district, you have underlying zoning, which has underlying requirements, but the overlay allows you to do something different within a different set of requirements.
One we're considering doing in January is Highway one eighty-two, in light of the recent grant, is to make that, so that it doesn't all have to be, you know, necessarily T district. You could have an overlay, which is more customized to the conditions that are along that corridor, and so, it can relax requirements in some situations, or it can increase requirements, depending on how you structure the overlay.
So, an overlay could relax existing underling, underlying?
Yeah, it could be like, so for instance, in Highway one eighty-two, if we were to do an overlay there, we could say, you know?
It's currently zoned T five, or, it's currently T five to T six, I think. We propose it to the T five C, which is T five corridor, which is kind of like the subdivision around Russell Street, which is, could be a little intense, if somebody wanted to buy one of the existing buildings and existing gas station, turn into a restaurant, it's kind of hard for them to do that under the T district regulations. So rather than relaxing the T district regulations, we're adding an over, we wanted, we would like to add an overlay to allow that adaptive reuse of some of the existing structures, to get that initial development, or, you know, investment in development in that area.
So if the setback's further back than T district, or do you want to keep, you know, architecturally significant sign, you know, we can factor it in any manner, manner of ways, but to kind of make it fit the corridor.
That was a very all around bit, it was a conceptual discipline, but that's what you could do.
As a consequence.
Okay, all right, it just sounds like an overlay would add things as opposed to just changing underlying things.
In that case, it does with a local designation, it requires a particular program.
Planning and development, we're probably called PUDs, something that are corrected, it's real similar to what currently is. One thing we did go ahead and do is list out the existing PUDs that are in the city that are active existing PUDs, and that's just to kind of help people if you're going to regulate those neighborhoods. Section thirteen, this is a use, use regulations and use standards. This is where establishes the use for each zoning district and throughout the city. So, it's classified from commercial, institutional, industrial, other, and even temporary uses like, as an example, temporary, garcel, I think it was in there.
Instruction.
Instruction office. Instruction office. So, in this chart, the way it works, on the left hand side, you go down, left hand charge, you go down to the list of use, so a list, even a degree of establishment. Then you can go across, and you're going to see one of the, it's four different things. You're either going to have a P, which means it's permitted, with just the regular setbacks and stuff, A, which means it's additional standards, it's permitted with additional standards that have to be followed, UE, which is a use exception, and SE, which is a special exception. And sometimes it'll have both use exception and special exception, and that's just because you have to determine if the building's existing, you have to look at it to see which proportion is out there, and keep it followed. And, so for like food trucks, this is the example of those got up here, this is just how those sections for the use break out. So the definition comes first, you're at one, it is parking, which is the parking requirement for that use, loading requirements if there are any, and then the additional standard sections, which apply if it has an A, or if you're getting use exception or special exception, you have to do the additional thing. That's just part of the exception.
And we also have, for those that are going for a use exception or a special exception, if they wanted to be exempt from one of those additional standards, they just need to state it in the application with some reasoning as to why they don't want to comply with that.
And then this section's pretty, pretty large, covers a lot of different things. The telecommunications stuff has moved into this section, and then it's also been broken and hacked. The telecommunications tower stuff is permanent, it's being built, it's going to be there. And then there's something that, I mean, you're all aware of, that comes around on a cow, it's a portable telecommunications facility, like if you have a bulldog bash for game days, or concerts, these guys come into town, and we really don't have a process for them. So it's just, for them, it's just a simplified, you know, staff, or a process, or a solid tower. It's an easier process than it is now. Not necessarily easier to get approved, it just makes more sense. So the way it is now, you have to get a very conditional use, and I don't know where you put it in the city. So this just gives them a clearer hassle to get to the approval section. Any questions on this section? Pretty big one.
I, I just, I guess I have one based on what Emily said. If I'm looking at those additional standards, and somebody just writes on there, well, I don't want to comply with D three.
So if you're going and those?
I want to comply, comply because I don't want to. Then what?
So it's, say, you have to give, every, every zoning, we'll do churches for example, every zone is a special exception, and saying there's one requirement for, you know, entrance to the front, we'll just say that with the example, if they for some reason didn't want that, they need to state that explicitly in the application, which we would present at planning and zoning and the board of aldermen, and y'all could choose whether or not you agree with that, or you will make them comply with that or not.
The basic of the process.
That's what I was questioning is, what, what does that look like? So that goes either through planning and zoning, or through the appropriate board, and then ultimately at the board of all of them, and or that's a, okay, that's what I was wanting to see where that, how that.
And then if they were like wanting to comply, they could, because it was some small, you know, amount of distance, then they could handle it in a certain way.
Is that like, y'all said, like ten percent, or?
It depends on what the request is. It lists out specifically, like, if you're going to set backs, it's this range, you know, you're building high this range, it's based on the thing, it's not just a ten percent across the board. It's activity appropriate for one thing, but not another, you know, if there's reduction in setbacks, I'd have to deal with it, if there's a reduction in parking, they'd have to deal with it.
But for both, that's, I, what I recall reading was that was pretty well spelled out for both city staff and future boards to know, this falls within the realm of allowed to be happening through administrative adjustment.
Correct.
That should protect everybody involved.
It probably set the ranges within that it wasn't obvious, so he says the app isn't, you know, making decisions arbitrarily, and then if it triggers beyond that, it needs to go to a board and ignition.
We can make those, maybe there, make sure that's in there, maybe at the top, we're talking about additional standards. Following additional standards is the development standards. This is the, that's involved in how you build something, what's required, but, what is the parking lot condition, where is the landscaping, what's the building look like? Signs are over this section, buffers are over this section, landscaping. It's, it's a, it's a big section that a lot of the consultants that we deal with will actually, this will be the main section we're in, once everything else has been determined before we get there. And one new thing that's in here is the one at the very bottom, which is only on a paragraph or two, is the addressing, and that's just to give some logical way of addressing buildings. Usually you would think that'd be a difficult thing, but has been in that, so.
You mean, you mean like numbering?
Right.
Okay, making sure that those numbers are visible to the emergency personnel?
And also, even word being visible is not really a logical word.
Yeah, yes. Well, I thought we were using GTPD for?
Correct.
We are.
It wasn't visible anywhere.
Oh, okay.
Out of like, issues that we've encountered, you know, or they've encountered, it come to us, but so it's just a kind of clean animal.
Okay.
Questions on this? It just the way the chart works, in the chart itself is the specific standard, like how many trees you require for this commercial building in this zone. For the bottom of the landscape section, just spell out what, again, a tree is, what a truck is, you know, those kind of things that aren't the actual number required, the part, I like the spec section.
This has allowed us really to customize based on the zone, to your, you know, your rural commercial landscape changes are really relaxed, the facade standards are more relaxed, the gravel parking lots are relaxed, and then it can range by zones in a way that our old ordinance didn't allow. And so this is hopefully going to help for a developer to go to this chart and know exactly what they need to comply with with the ordinance, instead of flipping through multiple chapters.
And the buffers are the typical things that we've experienced in the past, ten feet of trees or whatever.
Just written more.
Yeah, there's a little more defined ways to define it now, is by intensity, and you have to kind of bounce through the definitions and back and forth to figure, then you have chart and cross-reference to figure out that. This just spells out four buffer types based on, you know, this use next to this use, you know, this industrial use next to any residential use, is this buffer, two rows of trees, three rows of trucks, this one, you know, it's more sophisticated.
Well, I know we had an issue where the, it was a trees or a fence, and the developer went, the trees and the fence was not?
All buffer types not required.
Okay.
And then for P districts, I think the buffer's like one of the smallest, if a T district property, a BUDS, like a single dwelling residential neighborhood, there's a buffer part, but there's a reduction built in, if they build a different solid wall, solid measuring wall, produce that buffer weight. Subdivision should be just subdivision standards, cycling standards actually in the development standard, this is specifically related to subdivision. This is a, in our current code, it's under pending to be, and it's just been looked at, modified, updated, some additional graphics added to illustrate what, what they're doing. I can speak a little bit of this extra, which may be the engineer, the department that has the main input on this, but this is what anybody is doing, subdivision, sublinated property, and subdivision, this is the.
Well, I do, I do have one question, and maybe you can answer it.
Well, I can also get Edward, he's, he's in his office.
Well, and, and it might, again, from the draft, earlier draft that I read, I want to say that it's specifically, I recall, it talked about cul-de-sacs and significantly reducing that, and then there was some language that was right under that, but it was like, so, it, it seemed like that, we were trying on one hand, deal with it in one way, and then on the other hand, it was like, but oh yeah, you can still, I just felt that that was, well, need to be clarified.
I think if, if this is the draft that we discussed previously, you marked a lot of markers.
Yep.
I think this is Jason Pittlin's, it's, it's.
Okay, well, I haven't read that yet.
Might want to look at it again, but I think the idea is to kind of discourage cul-de-sacs, there's some additional drawings that obviously aren't on here, but if there is a cul-de-sac, it's the idea of having this green space in the middle.
Yep.
But what's recommended is something more like that.
Yep.
And there's a, a section in there that has pictures next to the street pipes, that goes in a lot more detail of how you can do that to avoid the cul-de-sac.
Yep, I need, I haven't seen that then, heard.
I just did a text, we'll see if he can come.
Section sixteen is environmental, this is a, this section starts off with.
Do you want to ask him a quick?
I mean, if it's all, if it's new language, I just haven't read the language, I'll just, I'll read the.
No, and, and Jason, Jason had a question about the cul-de-sacs and?
The different options.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just, it stated that I just recall from the draft that I had read and marked up, that there was one that seemed like it was trying to reduce the amount of that, and then there were some other language that sort of made it sort of unclear if I were thinking about how to do that, and Daniel said that that draft has now been significantly modified.
Like the length, I think the length is a maximum three hundred feet, if I remember off the top of my head, that, I can't, I can't remember exactly. A lot of, to be honest with you, some of that is driven by fire, and we were trying to accommodate mesh, some of those things now, the radius and the large radius is dictated by some of their truck movement, so what we were trying to do is envision ways that we could make that less of a massive kind of asphalt sea there, so this was kind of some of the options.
There are current, I believe, the minimum radius for a cul-de-sac is less than what the minimum is for, for fire.
Right.
So we always have to increase it even more, and so, that, that way, we actually get a green area, and every time you reduce the cost, they have to retape it and.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll read that, I was just, I didn't realize that that had been since.
There's still a discrepancy on that, let us know.
Okay, I'll take another look.
Yeah, thank you, that had three hundred.
And the street woods?
That's, that's all been, from the draft I read, that was the, again, based on the different type, the street type is dictates that, correct?
We have a lot more street types now with the different.
So it's just.
Yeah, and in the previous vision, you had like three.
Yeah, which I think is great, gives you a lot more flexibility in what you're determining, so, okay.
Then one other thing is, image on the bottom right, that's, that showed, you do a subdivision now, which I think it says somewhere in code, is like having connection points to the adjacent property to build out, which is similar to our discussion with the optional districts, the concept plan. And actually, that image right there, this probably would be a really developed concept, you know?
For the optional districts.
Edward, was there anything in particular that comes to mind that have been major changes that you want to highlight real quick while we're in that area? Surface water drainage, existing streets?
We've already had that discussion, we basically copied and pasted that over to this one. We updated the erosion control orders, provided a little bit more guidance on that, we've had some questions about that in the past. It's actually going to be a two-step process now, in that, we're asking the developers to actually go out and install their construction interests in a perimeter fencing, and then once all of this other factory, per the building department, then the permit will be issued there on the site. Because this happened in the past, is you get the erosion control permit, it'll show a plan, the plan's all great and all, but then you'll go through and cut and clear and do all the dirt work, and, and it's kind of becomes, you know, once we start getting complaints and things like that, we come to find out that all that required infrastructure had not been installed, so then it's kind of more of a reactionary thing, so we're trying to be a little bit more in front of that. We did take another look at all of our kind of street sections as far as the construction of the streets, and trying to provide a little bit more kind of robustness to that, it's not a major deviation from our existing, but we did increase the pavement structure value a little bit, and also some guidance on preferred types of materials that we use, and really preferred ones not to use specifically.
You're talking about base materials?
Base materials, yeah, yeah, mostly. And we've had, we just had a lot of issues with clay gravel, just untreated, great clay gravel, so we're trying to either go away from that, or require additional measure to stabilize that clay gravel if you want to use that. I think that's, yes, I mean, it's been, been a full, full redo, and obviously, we've been looking this for a long time, so I think that should probably.
Yeah, there's just the highlights.
Yeah, the highlights, and I'd say, just from an erosion, I like that, the two-pronged approach, and I would say, the part that sticks out to me from what I read was the, the construction ingress egress, I think is much, more resolved, and will go a long way for keeping mud off of the public, public right of way, the way it's currently written, so I think that's a huge improvement.
Cool, thank you. Sorry, Daniel.
Environmental section, this section is a current, again, as it's up to, the first part of this is nuisance, it just sort of explains what a nuisance is, and then the rest of it is going through enclassifying stuff as a nuisance, sound and noise, junk vehicles, sidewalks and parking lots are doing, and what sidewalks and parking lots are is that your business and your parking lot gets to a point where your poppet tires are causing damage, that's so broken up and destroyed, it can be classified as a nuisance to be made. Same thing with the sidewalk, moating standards, for a safety count, outdoor standards.
Well, now, I'm going to ask you a question on sidewalks, I mean, you're getting into, is that private property sidewalks, or city-owned sidewalks, or?
Private property sidewalks, where they're serving the public.
This is inside of parking lots, the sidewalks in the middle of median?
An example would be Kroger, there's a large pile that develops right there, it's against Kroger, that damages cars constantly, and they keep kind of patching it, it works for a few weeks, and it sinks back in. That whole roadway is owned by Kroger. We get, the city gets calls, and I think claims about damaged cars, and we, we could compel them to fix it. compel them to fix it, but it wasn't as simplified and spelled out, so this is just a way of simplifying and spelling out like.
And any sidewalks that are within the developer?
Sidewalks obviously, we didn't want to, the issue is that the sidewalks that's safe, like it's, it's broken, fallen off, people tripping constantly, the, the main one that's a part of.
Then about the nuisance type, I haven't read this section yet, so what is that getting into? Is this what we were discussing in the last board meeting on property?
Yes, yeah.
It's spelled out that process of how, how it gets.
I, I just hadn't got to that yet, I'm halfway through the.
I think it's a little bit more clear on how it actually occurs.
Yeah. The whole, the whole one was simplified, I believe.
This is like the 29, 10, 11 type?
Yeah. 21, 19.
21, 19, yeah.
21, 19, is that this kind of stuff?
Well, that's part of it, but it's also all the things you see up there, the mowing standards, all the things that go with that, and when, if it, if it reaches us to the point where we're saying it's a health nuisance, then it's gone way past where we want it to go because we want the code enforcement to get to it before it ever makes that, that level of.
Maybe it's just giving them more teeth to do with the job?
Yeah. More clarity, just clarity in language.
Or respond.
Yeah, more just clarity.
The, another new section part of this is tree protection. This one was a challenging one to write, is to try to make two different groups, like what's fair to the community, what's fair to the property owner. We reviewed several of the versions of tree protection all across the country, how they handle it, and also what we've developed into is, if you're developing a site, this doesn't apply to a residential lot standing there, but if you're developing a site and you're coming in to clear for development, the trees are within the building setback, 50% of any of their 10 inches of diameter may be saved or protected. However you want to work that out, you can, so it's given them flexibility, we're protecting the trees that are outside of the building zone, so they can still build on their plan of building, this is just making an extra effort to kind of protect the trees that are adjacent to neighboring properties and adjacent to the right of way of the public right. So it's kind of a, I think it's a very fair version of a tree protection. And then the graphic here is just showing like how you actually protect a tree, rather than just say affect the tree, give them a physical description of how you make that measure of how far out, not a grave, not, not park your car on top of, of, of paint there on.
And I would, I would say, I, I think this is a significant improvement over what we currently have, and I think this version of the draft, I think is, I would, I would tend to agree, I think it's much more fair in terms of how you do that. I would, I think where I could see an issue here, one of the issues I think, would be very similar to the erosion and sedimentation control. Somebody says we're going to do that, I'd almost see, is there a way to sort of the two-pronged approach to make sure that what they show on the plan is going to be the areas where they have tree protection, and that part of it is not signed off on until inspector goes out and see that the, that, those, that infrastructure is in place prior to being able to move ahead.
So maybe like inspection, erosion control.
Yeah, I would say if, if, if they're getting this, if they're going to do erosion control, they're going to put the fencing and all up at the same time, or they should. And that way, that would be something that may be simultaneously, otherwise, they're going to show on their plan that this tree's protected, and you're going to sign off on the code, and then you're going to go out there, and they're going to be parking equipment under it and other things outside of what would be allowed. So that might be something where this might compare up with the approval of erosion and sedimentation control, that that inspection occurs simul.
Yeah.
Whether simultaneously or some on-site portion of.
And that would be the same subcontract, they would actually put the fences up, it would be the same one that was normally viewed.
Tree, tree protection fence.
So that's all session, doesn't occur to anybody.
Are we telling them how to do tree protection?
We're, we're giving some basic guidelines and then how far off the tree, like there's the different zones in a tree and how much you can actually disturb before you get tested.
Okay.
And also this section is our groundwater management, as Edward mentioned, that's the same as what was recently adopted, just added to this, and then the flood damage prevention ordinance. This is the same as what's adopted now and is required to be adopted, this is put into this section, the only thing that changed was the numbering of it, so that it fits in the section, but it's all the same definition, terminology. And this is the only section right now you can see that has its own definition section. So the definition section is in the flood, flood damage prevention, they control that section. But I guess that's what the federal term. Building and housing code, this is basically the same as what we currently have, we just had to make it more concise format, and then also give us some outdated language, best example outdated language is intellectual section, saying it's pre-cell uses.
So is this our 2012?
This is, yes, 2012, and if it were, if it were going to be updated, it's just a matter of just changing what you're.
Okay, that was what I was going to ask, because we are going to need to do that in the next year or so, we're going to have to go to 2018 or 2020 or whatever it is that the fire folks and building folks say.
Right here is what it is right here, so if we update, we'll just modify that right there.
Okay.
Modify those, and if there's anything that's excluded or added to it, then it comes in the sections following that.
Okay.
Then also in the, is, building permits, just how you get a building permit, contractor requirements, I think this is something that the clerk currently does, and it's just something we want to track, like when a contractor has a business license, and so has a business license and has, you know, an active permit or a grace certificate state of the city. So our new system, MyGov is going to come online soon, it can actually help us track that, make sure that the contractor is all properly permitted, keep us in good grace of the state.
So city clerk is working, y'all are going to be married up in terms of access to MyGov?
Yes.
Ah, cool.
They have.
And then the last section is the definition section. We've taken the definitions that currently are like in the front of every single chapter and have moved all of them to the very end, and unified those definitions across different chapters, so that in, that the sanitation section, the terminology they use is going to be the same as the terminology used in the plant section, so we're not, you know, one's not saying house, one's saying building, you know, we're all saying the same thing. And then any definition, it's not in years addressed in section two, that's such a point on how we determine how to define that, and what it does.
Can you go over more in-depth individual sections?
Does anybody have specific issues about things that we, okay, go ahead.
Just for the public record, you're going to draw out short-term rental policy changes with, I know it's a separate vote, but I keep getting asked that every day.
It is, yes, it's separated from a public hearing standpoint at the board or at the P and Z, right? It was separated for, for that purpose. And then we're going to have, we've separated it as a public hearing because that's how we advertised it.
Yes.
But it's part of the UDC.
We voted separately, right?
Yeah, but it's part of the, it's part of the Unified Development Code.
Will it be a prior vote to the UDC vote, or is it going to be a post vote?
Well, that's up to the board to decide, we can put it either way.
I'd like to.
But it needs to go, it needs to go into the Unified Development Code.
Can we vote on it first and then?
Which one?
The short-term rental, policy regulation change?
If you have to agree first, the problem is UDC doesn't exist before it's fitted. It's designed to fall in as the last chapter.
I mean, yeah, if you're doing it separately, then it, that it can be through the second vote, through the short-term rental vote, it can be then inserted into the Unified Development Code.
Well, yeah.
Or, not, but, I mean, you've got to have the Unified Development Code first before you can say it's going to be inserted into it, so.
And it were to be approved, it would be in section 13, right, Unified Use?
Yeah, very last page.
Use regulations and use standards?
Yeah, so it would be added onto the use chart and then the tax portion of it would be added at the end of the additional use regulations.
And then on the optional district, what are y'all's top one or two complaints, and how did you address that from landowners?
First point was the amount of engineering and costs of doing the documentation to even apply for a rezoning, right, because that's the first, is the public hearing, that was addressed by them, you know, or reducing the requirements of the process, so just exceptional that, not the engineered document, but still had the resume, then the work session with P and Z, it was, you know, loud and clear, that it was resuming, it's not something that was planned in a room like or reglet, it was also addressed by a couple of consultants in the room, a couple of realtors. So then the version that's down with the document is reduced all that down to the permit, but there still is a process for approval that goes through P and Z, the Board of Aldermen, and also allows with the adjacent property to be notified if something's happened, so it's not surprising, also.
And from a rezoning standpoint, you don't have that, you know, objectors that create a three-fifths vote requirement, for example, it's just a notification so that they're aware that the optional district will go from.
Or the test, the change in condition.
Right, you don't have to go through, through that requirement.
I have my other question, just how does this ease the burden of a developer coming to town as well?
I mean, it's, the process, I would imagine, takes more than 30 days, you know, depending on your timing, when you submit it, you can get through pretty fast, because, you know, in our bidding, we can handle all the development stuff, once it's transferred over to developers, hired consultants, and start making plans, and we can get it in the mid-range, we don't have to do that in front end, it's transferred to the owners and property.
So those topography maps and surveys, all that's been pulled out?
We, 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 our view there, but not surveyed by, they're currently available GIS data for the state, called IR data, free to obtain, free to use, fairly accurate, not a survey to go line, we prefer one, if you can use tax records up if you like, it's, it's reducing all those options, I mean.
So some of those folks have been vocal on, on the, those properties in the optional districts, are they?
We have not.
Amenable to these so far?
This draft just came out.
Well, and it's in response to their concerns, so, yeah.
And we just actually received a comment from David, he's in that spreadsheet with the comments, and we, as staff plan on reviewing that, I think it would have to do with the use regulations within the optional district, and I think we saw some already that we want to recommend at the December 3 meeting changing, but I think it was in response to some majority property enters, like a hotel designation, I believe was one of the requests was to have that with an optional, which I think we have an issue with, so, things like that.
We have, we have listened often and, and made those changes as we've seen things that made sense, so I think the, I think everybody should be comfortable that we've been responsive to the requests and to the concerns that have come to us on a fairly frequent basis.
And then, speaking on behalf of the adjoining landowners, they are, they know that it's going to be one of those options that are, that are listed right there.
Yeah. They'll be able to hear that, you know, what it is, and then the central plan will be an document that will be, will compile all of that sort of man.
Absolutely.
So you'd be able to show people that the developer wants to, wants to buy something for, of areas that have the central plans in place, we can have a show, like, you know, look like your connection's going to be here, look like the stuff in the south is going to be commercial or residential, so they can make their plans for a person probably. So it's trying to create maximum flexibility with all system control, so we can predict where, where services are going to be in the future.
And avoid a piecemeal look to areas, so. Anyone else have any other questions while we've got all the brain trust right here behind us? No? Okay. Ladies, gentlemen, thank you so much for.
One more. I, I just, this is not a question, I'll be brief, because I'll say this again at the, the board meeting, I just want to say that, and this is for, for the city staff, I think, have done a tremendous amount of work, it's taken a, it's taken a good little while to get here, but this isn't the type of process that needs to be rushed, so kudos for that. And I would say for both this board, if, if and when we pass this, which I, I sure hope that we will, and for future boards, just knowing that they're going, I think there are a lot of things in here that are going to, we're going to find out that are right and what we need for Starville. There's undoubtedly some things in here that aren't going to do exactly what everybody thinks it is going to do, and at that point, there's, you know, there's opportunity to come back in and, and make some adjustments and make some tweaks, and that's going to be on future boards to be willing to, to do that. But I think this is a huge step in the right direction, that, you know, we could go through, we could cherry pick particular things in here I'm sure that, that we don't all agree with, but there's a whole bunch more in here that I think people are going to be on board with, from very small things to thinking about landscaping, to very big things, thinking about what it looks like for how we develop some of these corridors and other places, which I think is a definite step in the right direction. So nice job, both your staff and engineering and everybody else that's been involved in this, I'm looking forward for that, hopefully that second meeting in December to getting this approved, so come into January, we're ready to get it.
Yeah, I think so, and you absolutely, I, I know if anybody knows that y'all buried yourselves in this, and I really do thank you, you've done, you've done yeoman's work, and Dr. Kim, thank you for carrying it all the way to the end, so we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
So thank you, everyone. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn our meeting. Matt, we're out.